Good evening, everyone. We'll get started with the meeting tonight. Can I get a motion that the agenda for the February ninth, two thousand and twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Bevan makes that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the January twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Mayor Sahara makes that motion. Any questions or concerns? Perfect. All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, moving right along to delegate delegations. Tonight, we have the Edson and District Public Library with us. And so I will hand that over. I do believe we have Michael joining us tonight. Welcome, Michael. I will hand it right on over to you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackie. Okay. Let's get the shared screen up here. There now. Hopefully, everyone can see my presentation. Any problems? Give a shout out now. Nope, I will move ahead. Well, thank you, Mayor and Counselors, for having us this evening. Our presentation is Edson District Public Library, Evolving to Serve the Community. Co-presenting with me tonight is Graham Matichuk and Richard Isaac from Manask Isaac. And Sheila Buckle, our head of the Building Committee, and Robin Corser, the Chair of the Town of Edson Library Board, are here to answer questions after our presentation. So we'll start off with current facilities, what the library's role is in the community, the reasons for the study. And then Graham and Richard will deal with the feasibility study itself, and then we will talk about next steps. So to dive in, our current facilities. So the library was designed in nineteen seventy nine. It was built in nineteen eighty. And while county residents have always used the Edson Library, there was no formal agreement between the library and the county until nineteen ninety eight, ninety nine. Thus, the county population was not considered in the original design of this facility. Currently, the library has seven hundred and sixty eight square meters. Once the art space has been renovated, then the library space will be eight hundred and thirty six square meters. Best practice indicates that for two thousand and twenty, we should have had nine hundred and eighty seven square meters. In nineteen eighty, the town population was five thousand, six hundred and seventy one. In two thousand and twenty, our current service population is over thirteen thousand. One of the key issues with the current facility, aside from the space, is a failure to meet building codes and accessibility standards. The library's mission is to respond to the changing needs of the community, to provide access to information, knowledge, resources, and technology. If the library goes beyond that, we provide a space for the community to meet and for sharing of art and culture. We provide a safe and welcoming space to everyone who comes in our doors. Tutors and parents rely on our education collection, and in everything we do and provide, we are keenly aware of our role in aiding the most vulnerable members of our community. The January two thousand and twenty Plan of Service had feedback from over two hundred people in the Edson community. The feedback we received tells us that while we provide a lot of what tells us that while we are providing a lot, we are not able to meet our service goal of providing comfortable and welcoming space for everyone. We are very crowded, and the facilities are not welcoming to those with access needs. The second goal of our Plan of Service is to increase programming, and that's something that we currently strain at the seams to provide. In non-COVID times, after school, the library is standing room only. The Library Board seeks responsible ways to meet the demands of our community as driven by our strategic plan. The past plans designed in two thousand and twelve were not financially viable. We went forward with this study specifically to meet the community needs in a fiscally responsible manner. I will now turn it over to Graham to talk about the study itself.
Hi, I'm so understand we just have until seven fifteen, but you would have received the full feasibility study in advance, and we're just going to present a snapshot of it. So the feasibility study contains six sections, some of which Michael has already touched on. And the purpose of the feasibility study is to provide the research and the architectural, electrical, mechanical, and structural expertise to help your team make a decision on how the library's needs can be met in the future. Next, please. So the introductory section just gives the rationale for what the predictions might be for the population. And we communicated with the county, with the town, to get numbers that would be accurate for both the town and the district that the library serves. Library area is provided in more detail later in the report, but just in report, but just in summary, the provided library area at the moment is quite a bit lower than what would be required by best practices. And we have a proposal to fulfill some of those space needs. So you can see the growth in population and what is sometimes met with the growth in space. Next, please. So we learned quite a bit about the library facility itself and the role that the library plays in the community. So the Edson and District Public Library plays a significant role as a community connector. We learned quite a bit about the different stakeholders and partnerships that the library holds and potential future partnerships as well, some of which you can see in the photos are actively using the space and some of which have potential to make use of the space in the future. So in the bottom left photo, we had visited the library in the summer and did a detailed site assessment with mechanical, structural, electrical engineers, as well as Richard Isaac, who's on the call, one of the architects at our firm. And we did an in-depth analysis of everything we could see in the facility, which informed quite a bit of our report. Next, please. So we had talked about the role in the community, but there's we had also set some goals of what this feasibility study might want to explore. And so the Library Board and team flagged kind of some major concerns that were then repeated by the staff and have also been repeated in the surveys that the library has done of the community. So in summary, a number of spaces have functionality concerns, which was the focus of the study, the functionality rather than simply aesthetics or surface level changes. And we identified some of those concerns as must-do items as well as nice-to-do items. So kind of the high priority and ones that might need to be considered as well in tandem. So the summary of the area, it gets a bit confusing when you see it in separate, but the current library area is about eight hundred and thirty six square meters, which does not include the pottery studio. The space needs for two thousand and twenty, based on how Edson uses the library and based on provincial standards, suggests that nine hundred and eighty seven square meters should be provided at the moment. And by two thousand and forty six, with the expanded population, we expect that about twelve hundred and fifty five square meters would be required. Next, please. So these are just a few comments. One of the major comments that we had that we had learned was that the noise gradient or how different patrons interact with each other was creating issues, particularly when the library is packed. And that they've heard from a number of community members that lack of space is their primary concern when they visit the library. Next, please. So this is just an image showing the current library layout. So you can flip to the next slide, and we'll go into some of our recommendations. So our recommendations, in summary, transform a couple of the spaces, but also rearrange where some offices or programming spaces would be located. So the main thing that you might notice is that the courtyard area would be infilled as a children's library space, which would help mitigate noise issues between quiet study programming areas and children's areas. The staff spaces are suggested to be rearranged to accommodate the current and future number of staff and provide safe working environments for cataloging and privacy for individual meetings. Through a discussion with the Art Club, we found that their current space, which is located just by that north arrow where we proposed a quiet room, we have proposed that that would become a quieter space to help with the sound issues and ensure that people who are coming to the library for those quiet moments can still have that provided. The multi-use room would continue as a multi-use room. And the other major item was the transition of these women's and men's washrooms into more accessible spaces. So at the moment, the washrooms do not meet accessibility standards. And continuing into the future, as the library might expand, they would not provide enough actual toilet facilities to allow by building code for the building to expand. So in the report, we give a detailed explanation of those actual numbers. You can flip to the next slide, please. So this just shows how it might conceptually look in the space if you're not somebody who sees through floor plans. One of the items that was not shown in the plan over to the right is the more kind of structural items that needed to be addressed. So there's been leaking in the skylight over the entry. They're finding safety issues with the canopies over the entries, having snow and water leak into the entry pathways and create safety issues. And there's a number of items that are also in the report in writing, not necessarily diagrammatic, such as electrical improvements, mechanical improvements with safety and in how some of the fumes from the pottery studio, for example, are being recirculated. So those are kind of the, a lot of those items fall into the must-do category for their safety issues. Can flip to the next slide, please. So we provided a few diagrams that just show conceptually how the space might look when it's rearranged. Again, most of the changes are very functional to allow for the, a proper noise gradient in the space and to allow for the library's growth. You can flip to the next slide. I'm sorry, let's go back to the three D diagram, just two slides back for a second. And so in summary, for the actual renovations that we've recommended, there's the rearrangement of some spaces. There's a provision of spaces that are not currently provided, such as quiet and children's areas, an archival storage room for some of the items. And this is all informed by our analysis of the facility, structurally, mechanically, electrically, and architecturally, and the needs of the library. So you can flip forward to the costing. Please, thank you. So our cost summary is based on the budget of the library as well as the immediate needs. So the short-term renovations, which we would consider many of them are life, safety, or essential functional changes, would be about three hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, which includes design fees, all of the other bits and pieces. And medium-term renovations, which are also important, but might be pursued within the next five to ten years instead of the next handful of years, would be four hundred and ninety two thousand. You can flip to the closing piece. And this just gives the short, medium, and long-term recommendations as well as the phases of the work. I think Michael had some closing comments, and then we'll follow up with questions.
So essentially, the key here is better serving the community. We need council approval to move forward. The Library Board has a small reserve to begin the detailed design and the interior renovations and to start. And we need approval in order to actually start fundraising and, you know, to actually go public with these plans. We've been very careful not to talk about any of this until councils had a chance to look at it. But we do fully intend to be doing fundraising for this, so we need kind of council's permission to move forward with that. We do need to have a further discussion with the town and council. We do not expect council to make any funding decisions right now. We realize that large decisions will have to be discussed in detail. And we understand that any components of this project that the town chooses to participate in would have budgeting or reserve impacts. Some of our thoughts where the town would have a role include bringing washrooms up to accessibility standards, similar to what's been done in the Griffiths Park Center, and the change the actual building envelope if Phase Two moves forward. And that is all of our presentation in a very succinct, tiny nutshell. But we, of course, are prepared for any questions that council would like to ask.
Thank you very much. Can I just ask that you stop sharing your presentation, just so I can see my councilmates?
I have to.
Before we get there, thank you very much, Michael and Graham. That was a fantastic presentation. Thank you. All right, I will start out to council. Questions, comments? Counselor Shannard and then Mayor Sahara.
Hi, Michael. Thank you for your presentation. So if I'm looking at this correctly, you're looking for around half a million, so four hundred and ninety two thousand. My question is, can you phase this in? In the past, the library had put together a plan, and then they would ask for a smaller sum of money spent over time. So I'm a little confused. Are you asking for a total amount, or are you just asking to do fundraising?
This, Sheila or Robin might want to jump in here as well. Basically, at the moment, we're looking for permission to start fundraising. We do have a reserve to start some of the renovations and to start the detailed design. We're willing to, you know, put forward the funding to do the detailed design. And certainly, when it comes to the additional, the larger projects, the Phase Two courtyard fill-in, this is all stuff that can be phased in and done in portions throughout the next year, couple of years. We would hope that council does contribute some, but we're not looking for the total amount to come from council. We do have some planning to move forward already. Sheila, Robin, if you have something you want to add in there?
This is Robin. I guess I just wanted to clarify that the second amount that you talked about is for the actual fill-in of the courtyard. The first amount is for really quite essential things that need to be done, like bringing the washrooms up to standard and that kind of thing. And so those are more the immediate things. And then the four hundred plus thousand is, you know, further down along the line, if that clarifies it a bit more.
Yes, and the intention would be that we would complete the detailed design phase to get better cost certainty before asking council to contribute to the phase, to the, to the Phase Two, what we're calling Phase Two, but which is really the expansion phase of this, of this project.
For the costing, if you'd like, so the short-term renovations are grouped as such because a number of them affect each other. So for example, if some rooms are switching location, then it means that another renovation that is highly recommended, we need to go forward. So we wouldn't split necessarily short-term into several smaller bite-sized because it would leave empty spaces or unfinished work. So there's, that's just kind of the logic of how they've been grouped.
Thank you for that. That makes sense. Did you have a follow-up, Counselor Shannard, or you're good?
I'm actually good for right now. Thank you.
Mayor Sahara?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Curry, and thank you, Michael, for the presentation. It was great to see this. It's part of our agenda package, ties in nicely with our asset management plan. Obviously, there has been a need at the library for quite some time, and I think you've come up with something that is fairly reasonable. I would agree with what's being recommended in here that in order to do this as most efficiently and effectively, though, you'd want to do probably the short and the medium term all at once. Otherwise, you're going to be looking at increased mobilization, demobilization costs. And it's so, so much better when you can kind of work in tandem and get that all done at once. I think for us, one of the things that we're going to have to do as this is a facility that serves not only the town of Edson, but Yellow County, is have some conversations with them and develop a plan moving forward and seeing how that looks like. But I do like what, what you have here for a plan. I think it addresses the needs in our community, especially some of those accessibility challenges that we have at the library and sound issues and space requirements. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselors? Counselor Wilkinson and then Counselor Byer?
Through the chair, Michael and Graham, I'd really like to thank you very much for your presentation. It was very interesting. I love that idea of the courtyard expansion. My son used to clean snow over there, and I have shoveled the snow out of that stupid courtyard, and there's no place to put it, so get rid of it. It's absolutely perfect. I was just, as a question, and maybe, Michael, it would be for you. How often do you cull the books out of there? You say your collection's large and you need more room to expand. How often do you get rid of books?
It is an ongoing process of weeding. I have to say, actually, the Edson Library weeds more than any other library I've been in. We are essentially, we have no space. So the art collection really doesn't grow over the years. We weed as much as we purchase. It keeps a very fresh and new collection, but yeah, we are weeding a lot. And we have to because we've got no space to put anything else.
Well, I think with people online now, too, it's a little different in the entered library visitation. Just one more question, Graham. I was on the committee about a new multiplex, and everywhere we went, they said, don't have the desk by the door. It's too cold. I noticed you've tucked it around sort of the corner by the door, but you've taken that all into consideration, how cold it is when that door opens, especially in this weather.
Yeah, that's a great point. So the library does have a vestibule leading in, which usually helps with just mitigating that cold air from flowing in. But we, there are a few pieces of this that we've actually designed in more detail than we normally would for this level. But the desk itself is one that we would look at more, and so there could be some mechanical solutions for that as well, just adjusting the airflow so that maybe there's another vent above that second door, which would keep the lobby itself warmer and not just the desk. So that's a great point, but and the vestibule will definitely help.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I mean, it's not my business, but I don't want people to please.
Yeah, and
Well, I just want to point in, one of the, sorry, one of the, one of the things we'd look at in detailed design is that desk would have to have a built-in heater in the desk. We realize that it could be quite cold, and I would want something professionally wired in instead of the space heaters that they're actually currently using in the existing library.
Even inside? Oh, wow. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks through the chair to council. I've been on the library board for three years now and watched the board baton every idea that has seemed to be possible until, you know, coming to dead ends every time and then approaching the feasibility study to see what is actually even possible to move forward with, with walls and structures and building codes, not knowing what, what all those unknowns are. And, and then coming to the feasibility study and realizing the drastic change in the price tag from the twelve million dollars back in two thousand and twelve to, or sorry, twelve, twelve million dollars back in two thousand and twelve to, you know, under what looks like to be one million dollars for an expansion of the courtyard and then also upgrading the bathrooms to make them accessible and, and make the building more functional to the user groups that use it, which is, you know, a quite big portion of our, our community, and then notably the vulnerable sector as well. And I'm just very pleased with the efforts that were put forward and, and support the library's recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yeah, thank you for the, through the chair, thank you to the library group for their excellent presentation and extremely detailed submission. I love it. Love, the more information at the beginning, the better. I am in full support of the Phase One. I think we should be doing everything we can right now to find that money. Safety issues and accessibility is non-negotiable, in my, my opinion. I do believe my recommendation to council is that we set aside an hour or two during strategic planning to talk about the five to ten-year plans for the library and try to start putting aside money for Phase Two. Or just in general, of expanding the services at the library. So in general, I'm very supportive and happy to see this presentation tonight, and thank you.
Anyone else? Good. Okay, I would say the same thing. I was pleasantly surprised to see those numbers. Looking at the plan, I was expecting a much, much larger number. And it is really, really exciting. I'm definitely in support in you guys moving through forward with Phase One and starting that fundraising. I agree with Counselor Sorensen. I think this needs to be a priority at our strategic planning, and we need to look and see where we can help out with this. And I think that those numbers, just having been my time in Edson, this conversation has came up, and it has always been, like Counselor Byer said, multimillion-dollar project. And I think, like this mayor said, I would prefer to look and see how we can support and how the Yellowhead County could possibly also support on this to get this done sooner than later at that price tag, especially with what we know is the market right now. So yeah, I think strategic planning, it should be on the table. And kudos to you and your board for coming up with a great idea and going out there and doing the feasibility study. That's really appreciated. All right, Counselor Wilkinson?
Just one comment, because I should have made this. Through the chair, I'd like to just thank you very much for having some funds put aside. I think that was very wise. And to even consider that you're going to fundraise. Thank you very much for that. Certainly don't mind supporting people that are willing to try to put something into it as well. So thank you to the library board as well.
All right, any last questions, comments from council? Counselor Byer?
Thanks through the chair to Mr. Baird. I just want to confirm that you have everything you needed from council.
I think the, we've seen support here. So if, I guess, something just solidifying that we are approved to move forward with what, with the detailed design and to start kind of the renovations that we can afford to get started with. Of course, the detailed design will take a while to get done before we do anything else. So that's our, our next step, the detailed design and to start fundraising.
Going to CEO Bitner, do we need this to go to a motion at a council meeting, or can we go ahead with just show of support at a committee?
I'll actually bring Ms. Parsons in on this one. Just clarify that.
I see the mayor has his hand up, too. He might have a response.
Madam Chair, I think it would be best for us to have a motion on this. That's, that's official, just so we can ensure the library has clear direction as well as council on what we would be comfortable with at this time. I certainly don't have a problem with moving forward with detailed design, but I think we need to have a conversation before fundraising starts, just to make sure that our partners are on board and that we, we have this as part of plan. I don't want to see us getting into something that we have not funded yet.
I see Sheila, you've got your hand up down there.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, sorry, computer problems. Um, yeah, I guess just to be specific, what we were asking was whether we should continue with detailed design for both the Phase One, which was the renovation phase, and the, the washrooms, things like that, as well as the detailed design for the expansion phase. So we were looking for both, for clarity from council on both of those, those items.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for that, Sheila. That'll be really good for us to know for that motion. And so what we can do, Mr. Baird, is bring that back to council at a council meeting. We, would it be realistic to have that on the agenda for next week? Ms. Parsons, no, I don't see her face. She's not on my screen.
Oh, sorry, my apologies, Chair. I didn't hear my name there with the question. I will touch base I will touch base with Michael tomorrow, if not next week, then the following council meeting. But it shouldn't be a problem to get there next week.
Fantastic. Thank you for doing that. So, we'll bring it to council hopefully next week and then have a official, if not the council meeting, have that have an official motion. Sorry, Councillor Shannard?
Yes, I'm not against renovating any of the buildings. My concern is this is not the only building in town. And making a motion in support, before I support anything, I'd like to know what the dollar figure, like, go ahead, I'm all for it, this building has to be up. But I don't want to lock ourselves into until we have an estimated dollar amount, like I asked earlier, like it's 500,000 and then could go to a million. I want to know what is the town share simply because the library does serve a very important to our community, but it's not the only building. I don't want to back myself into a corner saying we supported the library. What about the red brick and some of our other older buildings in town? So, that's what I'd like to see first is a dollar amount before I'd say yay or, or nay. Thanks.
So, Councillor Shannard, that is what this motion is about. They cannot have those dollar amounts without a detailed design. So, council is not agreeing to anything in this motion, other giving, other than giving them support to do that, and they would not be able to have those numbers without the detailed design. So, we would not be committing to anything other than the library board being able to go forward and do the fundraising and get those detailed designs, and then we would have a figure that we would know.
Okay, can I comment to that? I fully understand that, I'm, like I said, I don't want them thinking we're going to do it. I'm in full support of coming up with a design. I just want to make sure we're not making a motion to send them down the wrong hallway.
Go ahead, Mr. Baird.
And, and just to clarify, for the detailed design, as I said, we're, we're looking for permission to go ahead with it. The board is fully prepared to fund the entire cost of that design. So, it, it is not asking for the town to commit to any funds at this time until that design comes back.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. All right, Mayor Sahara?
I'd also like to comment that while the library board operates the library, the actual library building is a town town building, unlike some of the other buildings that were mentioned in Councillor Shannard's comments. But definitely, we need to, to get that detailed design in order to understand what those numbers look like.
All right. Okay, thank you. Any other last comments? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming tonight. So, Ms. Parsons will be in touch with you, Mr. Baird, just to discuss what that kind of motion will look like, and then that will come back to council. And very excited to see it on the table and excited to see what comes forth with that. And, once again, thank you so much for all you guys' hard work.
Thank you very much.
Now, feel free to join us. Feel free to join us for the rest of the meeting, but we also understand if you would like to leave.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports from staff, the executive office, we have the draft revenue sharing agreement. This is going to you, Ms. Bitner?
Yes. The revenue sharing agreement we had with the county, as we know, expired at the end of December, so there's been some discussion on where to go with that. I think it's been, it's been agreed that a two-year extension on the existing agreement would, would be a good start, gives time for, we have two new CAOs starting. We have councils coming in later this year. So, a two-year extension gives, gives a bit of time to sort of newer people to get their feet under the table, so to speak, and, and understand a little bit more. So, we'll be bringing forward to council next week a, a, a two-year extension of the existing agreement.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up. Councillor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to administration and council. I'm excited to see this brought forward and thankful that the county is willing to go for two years, as I think it's in the best interest of everybody, them and us and all the residents that live in between. So, I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor Sahara, then Councillor Sorensen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree that having a two-year extension is a reasonable amount of time to give both communities a chance to get their feet under them with new CAOs and councils. I think it would be a little too soon just to, to have that as a one-year extension. Two-year extension will allow both councils also to start forming a relationship. We don't know what the, what the makeup is going to be and how many changes there's going to be. So, I'm looking forward to continuing this partnership. It has worked well for both municipalities. We've accomplished a lot over the last number of years, and that's thanks to the hard work of, of both councils and administrations. And we're only stronger for working together, and I think this, this agreement shows that. And I think that when we look at things like linear assessments and some of the issues that we've had with the provincial government on some of these issues, the relationship that we have here locally allows us to lobby on each other's behalfs and strengthen our region, which I know in other, other jurisdictions, they are not so fortunate. There's lots of fighting and that sort of thing. So, I'm looking forward to, to your extension.
Councillor Sorensen?
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to say I'm obviously in full support of this. And the fact that both communities are willing to, this two-year agreement to bridge the election, I think is a testament to how, how well we've built that relationship and how well we're working together. So, I think this is a great move for both, both municipalities. Thanks.
Councillor Shannard and then Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes, actually, everyone has said, I'd just like to thank our county counterparts. I agree, two-year extension was the best possible deal. Thank them for doing this. Look forward to full support.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I'd just like to say that I'm so pleased that both of our municipalities can actually use our common sense and our maturity to come to an agreement. And we're just very fortunate that we can work this well together for the citizens of both areas.
Thank you. Councillor Bevan, did you want to say anything?
No, just to support the same thing.
Perfect, thank you. And I would just agree. I think this is so exciting and it has been so fantastic this last term to work so well with the county and all of their council and mayor. And so, I'm excited that we're able to continue on this and to help the future councils and the new CAOs, CAOs as they come in. So, I'm in full support.
Okay, thank you. Enough, I think, to go forward. Oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor?
I was just wondering for CFO, CAO is saying full support as well.
Yes, I think the two-year extension was, was the best outcome for, for both municipalities. I was quite happy for that. We have enough obviously to go forward. We'll bring it forward to council next week for the official motion. And just for information, the, the county did pass it today at their council. So, we'll bring it next week for us to do the same.
All right. Thank you for that update. That is exciting news and thank you to Yellowhead County. All right, moving on to council-appointed boards and committees. Ms. Bitner, are you doing this, or is this?
I will start and hand it off to Ms. Parsons.
Okay.
Thank you, through the chair and to council. So, this is an item that council had asked administration to look into and bring forward. There were a couple of boards that we just weren't too sure about. So, I've brought forward, or we've brought forward, sorry, just a, a basic preliminary report on what they are, some of their missions, vision, statements, what they do within the area, how we're connected to the area in some of them. And so, this is really just a, a council discussion topic, I think, you know, which ones they want to remain a part of, how they're feeling about them. You know, probably the, the people who are appointed to those associations, how they're feeling about them, if they want to be more involved, if we shouldn't be involved. So, I will just leave it to council to discuss and, and direct for more information if needed for some of them as well.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Parsons, and thank you for pulling this all together. All right, I will put this out to council for conversation. Councillor Wilkinson?
I'm the appointee to both of these committees through the chair, so I could address it if you'd like.
Yep, thank you.
That West Central Airshed Society, prior to me being appointed, Councillor Boyce was appointed on this committee. And he had attended nothing, and I have never had any correspondence from this committee. And I've had one person ask a question about this site that they have here that measures the air quality, and at that time, Brian was able to get an answer for me. But that's been the only thing that I've seen in, what, six years? Now, the Athabasca Watershed Council, I have gone to their annual general meetings for the two years that I've been appointed to that. I'm not saying this isn't a great committee, nor is, the other one is a great committee as well. But I just don't know if it's something that the town has to have a representative on. With Athabasca Watershed, Lavon is a board member on it, representing Yellowhead County. She was very instrumental in this when it started. And it is of great interest to all different industries in the area, and of course, for the environmentalists who are worried about our water supply. And I do believe water is our new goal, but I still just don't feel that this is a good use of a councillor's time, really. So, that's just my input on it.
Thank you for that, Councillor Wilkinson. And correct me if I'm wrong, the Athabasca Watershed one is the one that they have came and presented to us. They almost present annually?
They did.
Yeah, they present us annually.
One of the elders down from Portwood, Murray, that time?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've met her again. And that was, their main offices are Athabasca, just as the other one is, I see.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councillor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to council. When I was on the Yellowhead Synergy Group, there is a representative from the West Central Airshed Society on there, and he would come in and present or provide updates. I, I think that if Councillor Wilkinson said that they haven't actually met, perhaps having them present to council may be a better option. So, all of council's kind of aware of what, what their, their air quality system is that they have at Vision Park, because I, I think it's interesting and, and good for the residents to know and for the community to know that it exists. But if Councillor Wilkinson isn't getting a lot of feedback from the organization that way, then maybe a presentation to council might be a better use of, of the time on the board.
Ms. Parsons?
Thank you, through the chair to council. In our correspondence with the Airshed Society, they did make an offer to come to present to council. So, if that's of interest, we will definitely reach out to them and get that scheduled. It also, like with my time participating with these boards, minimally, obviously, but just getting councillors registered, we haven't had a lot of contact with the West Central Airshed, Airshed Society, sorry. But I do feel like they have done, they are starting to do a bit of rejuvenation and trying to get more participation. It just seemed from their correspondence. So, it might also be something that they could touch on when presenting to council if there is any opportunity for us to be more involved and more informed in that aspect.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Sorensen?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to administration, would it be possible for us to continue membership on these three groups without a council member designated for them and just ask them to bring us an annual presentation for, for, for continuing to have membership? I think that would, I think it is important for us to be supportive of these groups, especially Airshed Society when we have sour gas wells around us. And water is always an issue and, and support for the coal industry is also important. So, I just don't think we need to go to an AGM. It might be better for them to come to us once a year with a annual presentation. That would be my support. Thank you.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I just couldn't agree more with Councillor Sorensen. I think all of us should be informed, and as you said, Councillor Byer, for the public to be informed that there is some form of, I don't know, not refereeing the air quality, but almost. I think that would be just as effective as, as I say, never being contacted at all by the one and just going to the annual general meetings and not feeling that there was much input really as a municipal member. So, I would love to have presentations to us as a whole council.
Anyone else? Mayor Sahara?
Thank you, Councillor Curry, and thank you to Councillor Wilkinson for bringing this forward as, as the rep. Previously, when I served on, on council as well, there was, I would say, limited benefit, for lack of a better term, of a council representative there. I think the Airsheds Society does provide a lot of important data in our area with their mills and as Councillor Sorensen or sour gas well, that sort of thing. And I would, I'm fine with giving them an annual grant, but I don't think we need council representation. I think council's time is better spent on, on strategic priorities and some of the other things that we, we have to do on a day-to-day basis. And I think the, the suggestion of an annual, even every two years, presentation to council, I think, would be far more effective. And then if, if there's an opportunity to go to a meeting or some sort of event, that invite can go to all of the council and, and we can certainly send somebody if, if we deem appropriate at that point in time. The Coal Association, they send me information on a regular basis, which is I think important with, with mining in our region and, and it being a major employer in our region as well. So, I certainly support continuing to fund them. I just don't think council representation is required.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then, I would also echo what has been said around the table. I agree. I find the presentations really informative, useful. And by having them come to present to us, our public does get to see them because it is live streamed and they have the opportunity. So, I think that's a great way to keep us informed and to keep the community informed. And I'm in support of the small IC for, you know, we have a very small contribution that we make to help support them, and I think they are, all three of them, really important associations. So, I'm okay with supporting that small fund. Okay, Mrs. Parsons, Ms. Parsons?
Thank you, Chair, through the council. So, just to summarize, we will basically remain status quo, except with, they will just remain on our boards and committees with unappointed, with no appointed members. We will reach out to them to do presentations on an annual to every other year basis. The only exception I would point out is the Athabasca Watershed. We do have to have a member appointed. Just went through our membership, when we sign up as our membership, but that doesn't mean that they have to attend the annual general meeting or do anything, anything extra to be a part of the association.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Sahara?
I'm just wondering if it would be through the chair more appropriate just to have our environmental services manager as the appointed member to represent the community? I don't know. Ms. Parsons, do you have any thoughts on that?
Through the chair, I think that would be acceptable.
Yeah, good.
Right. Okay, perfect. Any other last comments on that? Ms. Parsons, do you have all that you need?
I do, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, moving on to infrastructure and planning, notice of decision, direct control lands. Do we have, Ms. Darlene joining us?
Good evening. I'm just going to share my screen and start my presentation. Sorry about that. Um, sorry, I thought I had it open already. Okay. Sorry, buttons seem to not want to work for me tonight. So, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your comments and recommendation on a proposed accessory structure in a direct control district on Fifth Avenue. The draft notice of decision was in your agenda package for your review. So this is just an overview of the direct control parcels within the municipality, and it just shows you where this proposal is. So this is a more in-depth view of the site plan and the drawings that were provided to me by the applicant. The structure would be an engineered fabric structure that they intend to use for storage. So the image that you see in this slide is just their stock image, and it would be a fully white structure. And they also indicated to me that it would be two feet shorter than the model shown in the photo. So this is a map from our municipal development plan. The proposed development is within the future central commercial area redevelopment plan. And thank you, it was pretty short, but we're just seeking your recommendation for the notice of decision for me to bring back to council next week for your approval. And I will turn off my screen sharing, so you can see everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Darlene. So I will put it out to council for questions. Councillor Shinnard, and then councillor Sorensen?
Hi, through to the chair. So what they're putting up is this storage tent, but they're gonna ensure the quality of it, and it's secured to the ground. So what I see is just a temporary structure, and what are they storing in this tent?
We, through the chair to councillor Shinnard, we don't regulate the contents, we just regulate the use. So we regulate uses, not users.
Just to follow up on your, the first half of your question there, it will be engineered and structured permanently.
Councillor Sorensen?
Thank you, through the chair to administration. Are our bylaws silent on the issue of the structural material? I'm just wondering if there's any mention of engineered fabric structures in our bylaws? Or are they silent on the issue, and you can make accessory buildings out of whatever you propose? Thank you.
Are you gonna take that one, Ms. Darlene or Mr. Ham?
I'm gonna defer it to Julia here.
Sorry about that, I was writing down the question, because offhand, sorry, offhand, I don't have an answer to that one, and I should have anticipated that question. But offhand, I don't think we do regulate that. I will look that one up, though, and make sure we have an answer.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Sahar?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Darling, for your presentation. I guess my concern is, is I'm concerned about what is gonna happen a year or two or three from now with the material that's being used. I don't necessarily have an issue. I think it's a more affordable way of building. I think these structures, you know, have an important use, but being this a direct control district, near residential, I'm concerned what mechanisms we have to ensure that it's properly maintained, see if there's a new owner that buys a property. Last thing I want to see is one of these structures, you know, ripped and not looking that great down the road. So I don't know, planning if you have any answers to that question, or if bylaw would have some enforcement mechanisms that would be easily applied?
Through the chair to the mayor. So there are several mechanisms we can use in that regard. We can include a condition on the permit, and offhand, I don't remember if I put one on there. We can put a condition on the permit that if the structure becomes derelict or unsightly or damaged in any way, that we require them to remove it or repair it. And then I believe it would also fall under an unsightly premises that could be handled by bylaw, I believe.
Thank you. Councillor Bevan, and then councillor Byer?
Through the chair. Yeah, if it's made out of a structure, fabric and that, you look at the one down by the reuse center that, take or leave it has, they've cut into it, broken into it and everything else. Is this kind of the same kind of fabric, or is it gonna be something similar to that? If somebody wants to get into it, they can just, you know, take a knife and cut it and get into it like they have down there and kind of wreck it?
Through the chair.
Mr. Ham?
To councillor Bevan. We can't entirely speak to the exact fabric that they're using. They offered us an engineered drawing that was created by a company that specializes in this. So in comparison to another facility, I'm not sure if this would be better or worse, but it will be a type of fabric that will, you would be able to cut through based on the, just the sheer size and magnitude of the building. The other thing, too, that we're kind of, we're getting a little further away from it, but the concept here is that this is a loose fit as an accessory building as is. And so going into a C3 commercial space or an intended C3 commercial space, this, for, this really skirts the line in terms of accessory building as we see it from a development sense. Julia, would you like to add to that?
I would, I would just agree with you Mitch, that it is not, it's not on the same magnitude of what's normally been approved, especially in an area that the whole street is direct control, which means that it is part of our transition area where all of those developments would eventually see to be transitioned to a C2 service commercial zoning, which means that currently, there are residences next door. However, in the future, those houses theoretically wouldn't be there. So it just leaves a little bit of gray area where we're looking, we're looking for your, since it's a direct control area, we're looking for your feedback, so that when we bring you a recommendation, we have sure footing on it.
Great, thank you. Councillor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to administration. So my question kind of actually aligns up with what Mr. Ham and Ms. Darling were mentioning, is that if this is a direct control and it's supposed to be, I think the report said C2, but Mr. Ham mentioned C3. If, I realize, previous, it's been my understanding that we've been trying to get away from the direct control, so this type of stuff doesn't come to council. Is there any reason why we would continue this in a direct control rather than putting it to what it would be intended to be used and allowing them to get permits under that zoning, I guess? Thanks.
Through the chair to councillor Byer, that will be cleared up in the land use bylaw rewrite, and we would, and then through our statutory document process, we would begin to amend back to our MDP as well. So that should be moving forward in the very near future.
Councillor Sorensen?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair to Ms. Darling. Two-part question, if I may. Is there a maximum size allowable for accessory buildings? And the second part, is there any, does this location meet all of the setback requirements for that property? Thank you.
So, through the chair to councillor Sorensen. So the max size and the location, like the setback requirements, in a C2 district, neither of those things, they don't meet, I, offhand, I didn't write it down, but I believe C2, the maximum lot coverage is 80%. They don't reach that. And the setback requirements, this is where it gets a little bit tricky. Because it's a direct control district, we have to treat it as we intend the use. So if we're treating it as if it's a C2 district, currently, assuming that we're treating every development on the street as a C2 district, it does not have any side yard setback requirements. However, the use next door is a single-family dwelling, and the setback requirement to a residential district is three meters, and they do not meet that, as the setback currently as it sits is only .61 of a meter to that side. So it's, this is where the discretionary portion and the fact that it's controlled, and it's not clearly defined as what these are actually zoned, really makes the decision harder whether or not we're issuing a variance at that .61 because it's a three-meter requirement, because the neighbor is a residential zone, or if because they're all zoned direct control with the intention of being C2, that there is no setback requirement. Does that answer the question, or does it just ask more questions?
That's great, thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Darling, could you say those setbacks again for me? So what would it be in the residential versus the setbacks for this one?
So, sorry, I had them written down, because these were the things that I knew, that I remember offhand. So the lot adjacent is currently being used as residential, but it is zoned direct control with the intent of being a C2 district. So if we consider the adjacent property residential, the setback requirement is three meters. If we are considering it C2 district as our MDP is suggesting we do, then there is no setback requirement.
And what was the setback that would be in this?
The setback that is proposed is .6 meters, .61 meters from that west side yard. And I have to apologize that that wasn't in my initial report. It was something that I realized this was a direct control and needed to come to council, essentially the day that reports were due, and I made sure that I had the gist of what I needed, and I knew that I could tell you and present to you the additional information you could require.
Okay, thank you. I myself, I'm kind of back where councillor Sorensen was, and I'm just looking at this, I like at our land use provisions, trying to see any of that material stuff that comes up. I'm not seeing much of it, but I do have concerns about that structure in that location, and I do have concerns about those setbacks. Sorry, Mr. Ham, did you want to talk to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to offer the opportunity to, for us to bring that information back to another committee or next week's council for discussion, if that's what's preferred, just to clear up that particular item. Because I don't want to, I don't want to spend too much time on this if we don't have all the answers for you, so I'll just give you an opportunity to rediscuss.
I would like that. And just with that, just the difference, sorry, Ms. Darling, I would like to know the difference between in the direct control, whether they're with commercial versus that residential, and just if there is any variance there between the two different districts, on what material we do allow. Mayor Sahar, and then councillor Shinnard?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I'm not really in favor of approving something like this in that area. We spend a lot of time and effort trying to make our highway corridor more pleasing. This is directly just off the highway. I think there is a lot of gray area here, and if we allow it here, then we could potentially have other properties in this direct control area wanting to do that. And I'm concerned of what that would look like in the image it would portray. If this is meant to be a permanent building, then we should be treating it as such in, based on what has been approved previously and where we want our community to go in the future. If this was an industrial area or someplace, maybe not visible as visible, I think I'd certainly be more in favor of that, but at this point in time, that's kind of where I'm sitting on it unless some new information comes to light.
Councillor Shinnard?
Yes, through the chair to Ms. Darling. The way I look at it, if, because we have a lot of like Fourth and Fifth Avenue, commercial businesses do touch residential, just like to get a clarification, because if they are business, C2, then therefore their rules may be different than the residential. So just a clarification on that is what I'd be looking for here, next time you come and see us.
Okay, can I just, from council, are we needing more information for the council meeting? Are people in a position where they know they're ready to vote on it? Councillor Shinnard, do you need more information? Councillor Sorensen? Councillor Wilkinson? Councillor Bevan? Councillor Byer? Mayor Sahar? He's ready to vote. And Ms. Parsons, sorry, what would you like to add there?
Just, sorry, thank you through the chair to administration, Julia or Mitch. Sorry, Mr. Hammer, Ms. Darling. Just curious, do we need to bring that forward to council just with this additional information? Or is like, is it gonna affect your timelines permit-wise to delay to a committee and then delay to a council meeting? Again, we should maybe just bring it to the council meeting with this additional information, might lead to a bit of a longer discussion at the council meeting, but our timelines might be getting tight if we delay it to another committee meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Kayla, and through the chair, just to bring up an additional factor here, the, through Alberta Building Code and our land use bylaw, the external material finishing and color should be similar to the principal building. That's the, that's the direction of an accessory building, so that would not match in this particular situation in a, in a, in a C2 district. So that's just another element to add to the conversation, but we can bring the additional, additional information that's required to the council meeting next week, and we can have a small discussion at that point. I feel like that information will help us, help guide us to our decision-making.
Ms. Darling?
Through the chair to council, if it's your preference to discuss it at a committee meeting, our 40-day deadline for issuing a decision is the 8th of March. So I know that we're trying to cut red tape and make sure that we get permits out the door as quickly as possible, but if it is your preference to make these decisions with the best knowledge and the best answers, and you would prefer to discuss it at committee, I believe, looking at the calendar, that if we postponed it till the following committee and then the following council, I believe we would still be within our 40 days, if that is your preference.
I'm not feeling that we need that much time. I'm feeling across the board that if you guys just bring that extra information on to the next council meeting, we'll be ready to vote that same day. Did everyone's in agreeance? I think most of us know where we're falling, we just want to make sure we have the extra details. So I think we could do it in the same night as Ms. Parsons had said, we could do it at the council meeting. Yeah. All right, good to go for now. Do you have everything you need from us?
Can I just clarify the questions you want me to answer, just so that I make sure I get them? Because I read all the questions and then answered some of them.
Okay.
So you want to know the difference for the residential versus commercial setbacks?
Yes, please. Okay, I think you answered them, didn't you?
I think so, but I just want to make sure. And then, sorry. We were going to discuss the materials allowed for accessory structures. And I know there was a third question, and I don't know which one of these that I wrote down was the question that I need to answer.
The material, you answered the setbacks. That was it.
That was it? Just the two?
Yep.
Okay, I will make sure to bring those answers with me.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I believe that was round two, wasn't it? Round three, round three, good job. I wasn't, I wasn't sharing round two, so I sometimes miss those counts. All right, moving on to the Municipal Energy Manager Program introduction, introduction, and I believe Brendan is here to present to us tonight, correct?
I definitely want to introduce our municipal energy manager.
Oh, sorry, you're gonna, sorry, I will send it you to Mr. Ham first.
So we we entered into a program with the MCCAC five months ago, and our our wonderful addition to the organization is here to present on behalf of the program and on behalf of our department here. So I'm going to hand it over to Brendan to introduce himself, but I just couldn't wait to do it for him.
Hey, thank you, Mitch. I will just share my screen here. And let me know if you guys can see it.
We have got it.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor Zahara, counselors, colleagues. My name is Brendan Reom. I'm the municipal coordinator, municipal energy coordinator for the town of Edson, and tonight I'm going to be discussing the municipal energy management program and municipal energy management in town of Edson in general. So the agenda for tonight, I'm going to be talking about a background about me and where I come from and what I'm bringing bringing to the town of Edson. I'm going to discuss the municipal energy manager program, the progress we've made in the past, in the previous four months in within this program and the next steps that we're looking to take. So just to go into a bit of background about me, I have a degree in mechanical engineering from the University of Saskatchewan with a specialization in building science and HVAC design. So that's heating, ventilation, air conditioning. My previous experience has been in the public sector, the private sector, and the nonprofit sector. I'm currently registered as an engineer in training with both APEGS and APEGA, so I'm licensed to practice in in both provinces. My credentials are in good standing, and I'm actively working towards my professional engineering designation. And additionally to that, I'm credentialed as a lead green lead green associate by the Canadian Green Building Council, so I have experience in both the design and operation of lead certified buildings. So as Mitch mentioned, the program that we're working in is the municipal energy manager program. And this is a program that's administered by the Municipal Climate Change Action Center. And technical assistance for this program is provided by Clear Result Consulting. So what this program does is it provides to support to help municipalities build internal capacity for energy management, sustainability, and climate resiliency. And it does this by providing up to eighty percent of the energy manager's salary for up to two years. Now, we're we're not the only municipality participating in this program throughout the province of Alberta. There's currently eleven other municipalities who are participating. And it'll soon be twelve, twelve municipalities. The town of Olds recently put out a job application for municipal energy managers. So it's fantastic to see there's a lot of buy into this program and a lot of work that is being done. So through these through this program, as well as other funding opportunities by the MCCAC, there's been a lot of work in energy management and sustainable energy related projects throughout the province. Such as in solar, both Voltaic arrays, so the Canmore, the city of Edmonton, Edmonton and Banff have been doing substantial work in that area, among other municipalities. Municipal electric vehicles have been funded over the throughout the province and many municipalities, so in Canmore, Banff and Airdrie. As well as through the Recreation Energy Conservation Fund. There's been facility upgrades in rec facilities across the province, so Madison Hat, Banff and Drayton Valley. And this is just a snapshot of some municipalities. There's dozens of others that are doing similar work. So through this program and for the town of Edson, we've laid out the goals that we want to achieve within this year of the program. We want to incorporate energy management and sustainability into town operations. We want to develop also develop a made for the town of Edson energy management policy that will guide how we use energy in in the town, how we manage it, whether that's greenhouse gas emissions cost and future development. And most importantly, we want to achieve a five percent greenhouse gas reduction in each year of the program. So, and that's a five percent greenhouse gas reduction in municipal owned buildings and the municipal fleet. This this program governs simply municipal operations. There isn't a community aspect of it. And through this program, it gives us the opportunity to view sustainability and energy management through a variety of lenses based on the priorities we want to hit with it. So the three that I have shown up right now are what's referred to as the three pillars of sustainability. So there's the environmental aspect, the societal aspect, and the economic aspect. And these are, these are just three priorities that can go into creating holistic approach to energy management and sustainability. What's absolutely fantastic about this program is that we can fold in our own priorities and lenses and how we want to view you this. Good example would be using our strategic priorities such as creating a healthy and vibrant community or strengthening our foundation. We can view this program and the outcomes through our strategic priorities to create a holistic change in and improve our environmental performance. So through this program, we have, we have made significant progress in the previous four months. What this program has a prescribed path, so there's certain milestones that we're looking to hit every month and every quarter as we go through the first year. And the focus in the first quarter of this this program, the previous three and four months has been focusing on building a strong foundation in energy management. We want to create the systems that help us move forward and achieve the goals that we want to. So some of the key milestones that we have hit are we've completed a benchmarking study of town buildings with Clear Result Consulting. Now, this is this shows us how well our buildings are performing compared to the provincial average for buildings of similar types. We've also completed an energy management assessment with with senior management of town operations. Now, this energy management assessment, it evaluates the current state of energy management practices within the town of Edson. So that's what policies do we have in place? What kind of employee engagement do we do? If what procurement policies we have, what planning and budgeting goes towards it, and many other other aspects. And on the technical side of it, we've currently implemented implemented ten no cost projects that are projected to yield an annual emissions reduction of one point one percent. So which is a substantial a substantial result for only being in the first quarter of work and being implemented for four months. So we're well on the way to achieving our five percent goal. But going forward for the next next quarter, we're looking at developing the made for Edson energy management policy while bringing in a lot of expertise from all departments and all all levels of management and administration. We also want to continue to initiate and expand employee engagement so we can look at creating a a culture of energy conservation, a culture of sustainability throughout all departments. We also want to continue our energy audits of town buildings and project implementation. So this was will allow us to identify areas where we can make an impact in lowering our greenhouse gas emissions and creating a more sustainable operation. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate the interest, and I'd like to open up the floor to questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That was very interesting and lots happening. I'm impressed with what you have done in your short period. Well done. So I will open it up to council for questions, comments. Counselor Sorenton, my money was on you being first.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair to administration. I'm extremely happy to have Mr. Reom with us. I think it's fantastic asset to our community. And my even even better, we're getting him at twenty cents on the dollar. I think that's awesome. And I I fully support your goals. I'm hoping that perhaps strategic planning or over the next couple of months, we could have more discussions on your goals and maybe influence them. I have personally, I have a lot of a lot of interest in this area, and I'd like to do as much as we can while you're here. So fantastic presentation, and thank you.
Through the chair, Counselor Sorenton, thank you for the support on that. I really appreciate it. I'd be more than happy to have further discussions about this.
And just to add to that, Counselor Sorenton, it's 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 well part of the plan to bring this to strategic SPS and and for discussion and and planning for year two because we have Brendan for two years.
That was going to be my question is how long do we get them? Perfect. Counselor Wilkinson? Oh, you're on mute, Counselor Wilkinson.
Wait, had to go out to the phone, sorry. Anyway, Brendan, thank you. That was just an absolutely great presentation. Through the mayor, through the chair, maybe to the mayor, is is Brendan going to be part of the planning for our multiplex? As far as his knowledge put into that planning?
Mayor Sahar?
I'll hand that over to Mr. Ham. Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, it is definitely a part of our design plan to include the the MCCAC objectives as a part of our our design plan. Brendan's input will be welcomed. However, he does have some other checkpoints in the program that that also takes some priority. So it'll be, it'll, he will lend himself to the to the multiplex for sure.
I'm really glad to hear that because we need his expertise to get that building energy efficient and green. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Schard?
Hi, actually, welcome through the group through the chair. A question for you. I do appreciate what Counselor Sorenton saying we get you twenty cents on a dollar, but while you're looking at the buildings for energy, are you also going to give us a report on what the buildings are like? Like you're going to go in, see what we can do to save, but in that saving, can you give us a report? We had a building in discussion earlier, and I'm curious about the other buildings in town.
Through the through the chair to Counselor Schard. That is a small portion of what we're looking at doing is within this MEM program, it's it fits into our asset management plan, and then we want to assess the mechanical systems inside each building. And it might not be within the scope to look at the building as a complete whole. However, there will be systems inside that we will be looking at and assessing and reporting on.
Thank you, Brendan. You you all be happy to know that when Brendan presented to the library that Val is on the library board. Or sorry, to the historical society. So one of the first questions she asked was, would this be entered into the asset management plan? Brendan, if you didn't know, Val used to be with the town of Edson for many, many years and just recently retired and played a big role in the asset management plan. Counselor Bayer?
Thanks through the chair to Mr. Reom. I'm on the library board, as you would have heard previously if you were listening in, and we did get a report at our last month's meeting that included, I guess, an energy audit of the library and kind of how it comparatively to other libraries in Alberta, I think what it was, and it was great information. Changing over to the LED lighting and and different aspects that the the board has put in place over the past few years kind of shows that the benefit that that has been on energy consumption and definitely look forward to seeing or hearing reports from other buildings and how we can make them more energy efficient to save on costs as well as the environment and and help out our asset management plan. Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Bayer. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the support on that. And Michael and I have been working together in the library and looking at opportunities for savings. So I'm excited to see what comes from that as well.
Anyone else? All right. Well, then I will say thank you, and I look forward to hearing more from you. Am I assuming, are you planning to bring the kind of the summary of all of our buildings? Is that going to be maybe brought up at strategic plan? Is there going to be another meeting where we get to see an overall report of all the buildings and how they weathered? I've heard of a few of them along the way, just in our committees. But just wondering if you're going to be bringing to us an actual report with all the buildings.
In in response, so would that be a report on how they're performing energy wise or can condition assessments? Just as some clarification.
Oh, no, the energy wise, yeah. And recommend and any recommendations you would have would be great, too.
Yeah. So in response, we actually, a benchmarking report that I spoke about in my presentation currently gives a snapshot of how our buildings were performing in with within the years that we had looked at to get a get our baseline energy performance. So that's twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So we have a baseline of how they're performing. And I would be more than happy to share that with anyone who's interested and wants to see how how some buildings in our portfolio are are performing. Now, going forward, as we begin implement projects and as we look at, look at make different meeting schemes, different operation schemes, then we will be reporting on buildings individually and and I would be more than happy to share those with you as we're going forward.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Ham?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add that there's going to be some budgetary implications to some of the the opportunities that Brendan's going to create out of this program. So we will be reporting specifically on on the budgetary needs of the of the program. So there will be some pieces that will that will come along with that as well.
Yep. I I think it sounds like counsel would love to have that benchmarking shared with us. Or at least enough of us, so the rest can just skip it.
I can, I can, that'd be fantastic.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. And moving on.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Your attention, I really appreciate it.
Yep, welcome to Edson. All right, moving on. We've got nothing from corporate services, community protective protective services, questions from the media and public regarding items from this committee at the whole?
Adrian on the line, if she has any questions?
Is she here? Where is she? Go ahead, Adrian.
Hi, I have no questions for tonight. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you. We're still so just excited to have you here with us, Adrian. And did we have anything sent in, Ms. Parsons?
We did not.
Okay. All right, then, moving on, can I get a motion to move into a closed meeting session in regards to CEO recruitment FOIP? S seventeen, nineteen, and twenty four. Counselor Sorenton will make that motion. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Ms. Parsons, did you have something before we go?
Just a reminder that the one motion made in camera, if someone could please record who is making that motion and the time that it is made, the administration will not be in this section.
I will do that, Ms. Parsons, I promise. All right, motion was, the motion was gone. Yeah, sorry, everybody's in favor. I got distracted there. All right, we will see you all in the other meeting. Welcome back, everyone. Ms. Parsons, nine twenty two, and Counselor Bayer. All right, can I get a me, a motion for adjournment? Counselor Wilkinson made that motion. All those in favor? Good night, everybody. Have a great night.